I can't even remember what I did, but I did volunteer.
Okay, you ready?
Yeah, we have.
Jake Nichols.
Larry Player.
We did get to see.
Yeah, we do. Thanks.
Larry the Cable Guy.
Y'all break.
But I'm. I'm praying over it. What do you think he's doing?
Let me call the meeting to order this evening. We do have a public hearing scheduled that will precede our regular agenda. So this is a called meeting, June 11, 2024, for the purpose of a public hearing. We have two items before us in public hearing tonight. We will obviously take those separately. After those two are closed, then I will call our regular meeting to order. We will follow the public hearing with a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened June 11, 2024. So with that, then, we will open the public hearing with the first item before us, which is the alley closure at 208 East Bearden Street. Mr. Merriman, any additional information in regards to that, please, sir?
The only additional information is just by way of reminder that the council did consider a resolution to put this on the agenda. I believe we are about six weeks removed from council taking action on that resolution, but no additional information.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion about the about the alley closure at 208 East Bearden Street.
Second.
Okay, floor is open for discussion in that regard. Hearing none at this level, I'll open the floor up for discussion. Would anybody like to comment in regards to the alley closure at 208 East Bearden Street? If so, raise your hand, please. Sir, if you would like to come to the podium, we'll entertain any comments that you have in regards to that. And if you will state your name and address as a matter of record, please.
Hello, my name is Stephen Brown. I live at 210 East Bearden. And I would just like to know if there's a possibility to get the alley behind my land at the same time during this hearing. And I fully support Keith and his acquiring of the alleyway.
We appreciate it. No, sir, at this point in time, this is scheduled and announced prior, so you'll need to go through a process to apply to have yours done. That would be done through Planning and Zoning Department? Starts with our clerk.
It'll be a separate action. So effectively, you would have the same opportunity to come before council, but it'd be a separate action, so you would need to go through the same process. But Amy's the one you speak to.
I had started speaking with you last year, Mr. Danner, through emails. And I called a couple of times this year, but haven't heard back. So I was just trying to get that motion going forward.
Great, we'll get squared away.
If you'll start with Ms. Duncan, who is our city clerk, we'll be glad to see if we can get that rolling for you. All right, thank you. Uh huh.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Second call. Anybody here this evening to speak in regards to the alley closure at 208 East Bearden Street? If you'd like to speak, raise your hand, please. Third and final call. To speak about the alley closure at 208 East Bearden Street. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand or forever hold your peace. Seeing none, we'll call that item to a closure. We'll proceed in that regard, then. Second item before us this evening is the ordinance, ordinance number 25-2024. This is the City of Greer budget ordinance, fiscal year 2024, 2025. It's an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore, levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. I suspect council will have a discussion on that at a later point in our meeting. So if you are here tonight to address ordinance number 25-2024 and would like to speak in that regard, please raise your hand. Close the first ask. By the second ask, is anyone here to speak in regards to ordinance number 25-2024? If you would like to speak to the City of Greer budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024, 2025, please raise your hand. Third and final call. Third and final call of ordinance number 25-2024, the City of Greer budget ordinance, fiscal year 2024 through 25. This is an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore, levying taxes and to provide for effective date. This is your last opportunity to speak to council in this regard tonight at the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing that none have indicated so, I'll call the public hearing to a close. With that, then, council, we are going to move to our regular meeting. This is a regularly scheduled called and convened meeting, June 11, 2024. I'd like to ask Councilman Jay Arrowood, if he would, please to lead us in a invocation or a pledge of allegiance and an invocation this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the sunshine. I thank you for the rain. You always send what we need. You know what we need. And I ask you tonight that you give your servants sitting at this table the wisdom and the guidance that we need to help govern your city. I pray, Lord, that all that we do will be pleasing to you and you will continue to bestow blessings on the city, its residents and its businesses. Forgive me of my sins and where I failed you, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Counsel, you have contained in your minutes this evening two packets. There's the May 28, 2024, and also the June 4, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to receive the May 28, 2024 packet.
So move.
Second.
Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. The June 4 packet is now before you. It is the June 4, 2024 packet of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
Floor is open for, excuse me, any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, just from a public announcement standpoint, there's going to be segments of Arlington Avenue are going to be temporarily closed next week. Our Public Services Division will be installing new speed humps. Portions of the sidewalk on Arlington Ave will also be replaced. For more information, please pay attention to our social media and our website. The Greer Heritage Museum was named the Business Yard of the Month by the Greer Council of Garden Clubs. And it's our Urban's Parks team that works so hard to maintain that. So congratulations to our guys, always making our urban parks look great. Also want to congratulate the City of Greer Fire Department for receiving an ISO-1 rating again, which helps secure our lower fire insurance premiums for our community and just continues to show the commitment that the fire department maintains the highest level of standards. Want to congratulate our rec supervisor, Justin Miller, who was presented with the Garden Club of South Carolina Garden Hero Award by members of the Camellia Garden Club. This presentation helped kick off Garden Club Week last week while recognizing Justin's dedication to this community's beautification. And just want to remind you also, the farmer's market, moonlight movies and tunes in the park, highlights of our week and ongoing weeks in the summer in our park. So if you've got any inclination, which I would urge everybody to look into it and join and enjoy those offerings in our park. Mr. Mayor, counsel, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Administrator is available for questions or comments at your leisure. We'll move to appointments of boards and commissions. The one outstanding one is the Planning Commission in District 1. John Holland's term expires 6/30/24. I know he is going to be difficult to replace. Any action in that regard tonight?
No, sir, as I mentioned to you earlier, I had a plan. It didn't work, so I am, I'm working on it hard.
Well, we appreciate it. With that, then, let's move to old business. This is three items before us this evening in regards to old business. This is the second and final reading of ordinance number 23-2024. It's an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain property in the City of Greer and a memorandum of understanding between the City of Greer and Greer Relief and Resources Agency Incorporated. Action is going to be required for the purpose of discussion. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
For discussion. New or additional information, Mr. Merriman?
No, sir.
With that, floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, this is the second and final reading of ordinance number 24-2024. This is an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain property in the City of Greer between the City of Greer and White Wine &amp; Butter Catering LLC. We had discussion in regards to this at our first meeting. Red Watson joins us for a follow-up in that regard. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Since first reading, our city attorney made a few nominal revisions to the contract that sort of cleaned it up a little bit. None of the revisions affect the intent of the document or any of the stipulations that were contained in the document that you passed at first reading. All the changes are noted with strike-throughs, underlined in bold text. I'm happy to go through each of those changes with you, if you like, or if not, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
For the purpose of discussion and questions, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So motion.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion or questions. Red, are you familiar, I don't know if I missed this last time or not, are you aware of any problem? You know, insurance and alcohol relations right now are really tough. Are they having any problems with that that you're aware of?
None that we're aware of. We spoke with them at length during this process, met with them several times and made sure that they understand what our expectations are. And they have not expressed any hesitation or reservations about being able to obtain that and provide those services out there.
Do we know if, under current law, the city itself will have liability should something bad happen like that?
Where, mine, and I can lean on Mike and Katrina maybe to clarify this, but our general liability sure as covers us as it is. So no additional liability, no exposure to problems.
Others? Discussion?
If I say the last may, I'll say it again. I'm really excited about this. This is a, this is a big win, good fit. Think it's going to be a great addition to the facility out there.
Yes, sir, we agree. Very excited.
Comments? Discussion?
When did they anticipate starting?
I think about 90 days. If it passes tonight, we'll be in contact with them tomorrow to sign the contract and then we'll sort of lay out a timeline. But the conversations we've had indicate 60 to 90 days, maybe 60 days to open up or a soft opening. And then 90 days after they have all their licensure in place, then they'll be fully open.
Is there any type of outfit that they're going to do in order to kind of get rolling? Are they good with the current setup?
We've upgraded some of the kitchen equipment that would have been upgraded regardless of who the tenant would be, but there's no further upgrades or anything required for them to come in and set up.
Others?
Or just for events or anything like that? Or does whoever's going to be using the space have to use them? Or is there some type of fee for them to not be in service? Or how does that arrangement work?
They'll have first right of, you talking about like for catering or if someone rents the cabana or something? Yes, sir, they'll have first right of refusal to that. And then if, for whatever reason, they cannot provide that, then we would allow the person renting to go elsewhere to find someone to cater their event.
So they would just kind of explain the service that they're looking for? And like you said, they have the ability, if they have the ability to serve, then they get that opportunity?
Correct, yeah. When we book an event, we would put them in touch directly with White Wine &amp; Butter to cater the event.
So it's, they would, if White Wine &amp; Butter, I come to them and say, you know, I want french fries, hot dogs. And I've had another quote, and this is what they can do it for. But they, they can compete like that, right? We're not going to, just because they can do hot dogs and french fries or whatever, that doesn't give them the, or does that give them the upper hand?
When you say them, you talking about White Wine &amp; Butter?
Yes.
I mean, they wouldn't be required to honor any lower prices that someone were to bring to them. They would be required to present them with their catering menu and provide them options. But they're not required to honor any other pricing or anything.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is that if you've got, you got white wine and then you've got the other caterer, and it basically comes down, they both can do the same thing, but it's a matter of price. And so somebody chooses the other caterer, is that?
They would not be allowed, as long as White Wine &amp; Butter has the capability to provide the catering service, then our customer would have to use them.
Is that standard?
In event venues, we researched that and it's pretty standard. Well, I'll say standard. It, depending on where you go, but it's not unheard of. I know there's several event venues in downtown Greenville or in Spartanburg that will require you to use one certain restaurant or one certain catering service if you're renting that venue.
Seems like for the health of our tenant, though, it's a good thing.
Right, it's a way that we sort of try to incentivize bringing businesses in and letting them know that they are the preferred or basically they'll have all catering service unless, for whatever reason, that they cannot provide it.
Well, they're not going to make as much daily, you know, on the golf. I would think they'd make most of their money on the weekends and during events and things like that. So I totally get that because if you, if you allow other businesses to come in to compete and they don't have the, that kind of built in.
Right.
To make, to make up for the break even or the losses that are going on during the week.
And there's also issues of if you allow other restaurants or catering services to come in, using those facilities or allowing them to go into the kitchen or the cabana where the tenant has equipment set up, you run the liability of someone tearing up their equipment and trying to figure out who did it or, you know, just accidents like that.
If you're going to have an event, you just know going in, this is your caterer.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just like if you had an event at a restaurant, obviously you're going to use that restaurant and their food for your event at their facility.
Yes, sir.
It's a little bit different, but same, I see it as the same.
Yep.
Others? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Third item before, thank you, Mr. Watson. Third item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 25-24. This is the City of Greer budget ordinance, fiscal year 2024, 2025, an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore, levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
I'll make that motion with an amendment. The amendment being that we reserve the equivalent of five mils from the stormwater fund to be used on our construction projects and reducing the millage increase by that five mils.
Second, now.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget, restate, restate the amendment, please?
Reserve the equivalent of five mils, which is contained in the stormwater fund, to use for stormwater-related design installation for our construction projects. And then reduce the proposed millage increase by that was five mils.
Excuse me, I'm just, I'm making a note here. Now, you're certain that we have five mils of unencumbered money in that account? Well, for the purpose of discussion, we have a motion on the floor for, with an amendment. We'll need to take a vote to accept the amended motion. That's why I asked that question. The money's not there.
We've got, well, we've got my, the motion, Riley seconded it.
So now it would be discussion and then vote, right?
We will, we will need to vote on the amended motion, yes.
Okay.
All right. So second, floor is open, yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Do we, well, according to the information I received from David's office, we do have dollars in there that's unencumbered. Is that correct? That would be the equivalent of five mils?
That's a specific question, yes.
Okay.
Which is?
1.1.
Roughly?
1.2.
1.2 million. And how much money is in that fund? We got it right here somewhere, but.
Yeah, I'm sure.
2.3.
2.7. In unreserved fund balance, 2.3 million.
So none of that is encumbered at this point? I mean, we got any obligations on that?
David, why did you, why would you not have suggested that on the front end? That we take the, the financial explanation for that?
As I understand his request, he's suggesting we reduce five mils to cover expenses. The millage is on there to cover the debt. The debt was borrowed to pay the expenses. So using that money, and I don't know, at this point, we don't know what the stormwater costs are in the projects, but using that money to cover expenses is not equivalent to using that money to cover the debt. It's two different spending places, you know, it's going to two different.
Maybe if I'll clarify just a little bit, the question remains under the 2024s, okay? There's two projects that are in the 2024. That is the Public Safety Training Center and the Depot Street Parking Garage with some money available for engineering and architecture work for the 2025s as it applies to the Sports and Events Center, okay? So to David's point, and the unknown in this particular case is, is there 1.2 million dollars worth of stormwater directly related expenses in both of those projects? I would say on the front end, no. I don't think there's 1.2 million dollars worth of stormwater-related expenses. But even if there were, I don't know that for sure right now because we are still working through design and those, neither one have been with the Public Safety Training Facility. We've not got the GMP and we expect to go out to bid on the Depot Street Parking Garage within the next six to eight weeks.
In addition to that, reducing the expenses of the project did not reduce the expenses of the debt.
The debt's the debt's the debt.
So if, if that holds true, then why would we not, rather than encumber it on the front end, reduce the debt by using that money when we have a cost for that?
Because the stormwater funds are restricted to stormwater projects.
So that's what I mean. If we get a hard number for what the stormwater is going to be, we could, we could use that money and reduce that millage.
For one year.
For, for, for the, for the next year, right?
It would theoretically, if you allocated, again, you're talking about expenses versus a debt payment. And expenses for the construction of the project is different than paying the debt. So yes, you know, in this theoretical world, you could say all the expenses that were in stormwater apply to this one year's debt service payment. But in reality, that debt service for that debt is over the full 30 years, not one single year debt service. So and that's what I'm trying to say, you know, reducing the expenses of the project do not equate to reducing the debt service payment.
We're not reducing the expenses of the project. We're, all we're doing is saying.
Pay from another source.
Pardon?
Trying, you're suggesting to pay it from another source?
Right.
From the stormwater fund?
Right, right.
But that doesn't reduce the debt payment that we still need to pay.
Okay, but we've done that in this building where we're sitting. We've done it on several other projects. We've done it out of the 2% hospitality money for parks. What's the difference?
Those funds were set aside and not borrowed in the first place. So we borrowed less money, knowing that those expenses we paid from another source. In this building and police and the park, we borrowed 12 million dollars, give or take, and it was a $23 million project. So all of those excess funds above the money that we borrowed, you know, some, you know, 12 million dollars was paid from other sources. In this instance, we borrowed 40 million dollars to cover the entire construction of these projects. That was the source of funds. And now you're proposing using the stormwater funds to pay for something that's already contained in money that has been borrowed?
Okay, but I don't understand it, so I don't know that I can explain it to anyone else. What you're, it is because regardless of if it's for bonds or if it's putting storm drains in the ground, it all comes from the same pot of money. Correct? Our taxpayers are coming up with those dollars to pay for this.
Well, the source.
The stormwater's a fee, that's right. The tax is a tax.
But it's restricted, but it's restricted to a purpose.
On stormwater and, and so out of 40 million, yeah, you're going to, you're going to burn a million dollars on, on stormwater. And on 100 million, yeah, for sure. But I just don't see how, there's not, is there, there's got to be a solution to this dilemma because it does not. because it does not. I don't know.
I mean, in, in effect, what, and when you think through, you've brought up the rest of, of the rest of the projects for 2025. If you use a million dollars of stormwater today, which is cash that's sitting in the bank, we borrowed 40 million, assuming, all things are equal, we have 40 million dollars of expenses. Well, now we have 40 million dollars that we borrowed, 30 mi, 30 mil, 39 million of expenses. So we have a million left over that we've borrowed that we still have to pay back. So then when we borrow the 2025 money, if that gets approved, you know, in 2025, we theoretically could then borrow 1 million less then, but it does not affect anything happening with the 40 million that we borrowed today.
Okay, when do we have to make a payment?
September and March.
Okay, and how much are those payments?
The September payment is.
Right around $300,000 if I'm not mistaken, and I think March is 500.
It's 538 or something. And then March is a million three.
That's right, that's right. Yes, yes. Capitalized interest, yes.
What's wrong with your earmarking those numbers or those dollars to pay that, that, that debt service?
We don't.
Because it's debt service, it's not stormwater.
But it's tied directly to stormwater?
Well, I would, I would say that arguably, it's not. It's not because we don't know what those stormwater expenses are.
Well, hold on. If, if we don't know it, then why are we borrowing the money upfront? We don't know the cost of the project.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 if you're telling me we don't know the stormwater, because that's a fee. That's a, that's, that's a big chunk of it. It's just like engineering expenses, architectural expenses. You can find a percentage just to throw a number at it. But I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why we're, we want to raise taxes 14 mils, but yet we've got enough money to reduce it by five. And, and you know, however you, however you divvy up the money in the different piles to pay different people, that's what you earn your big bucks for. I, I just, I don't, I don't understand, because I don't think we're crossing the line anywhere.
Well, the bottom line is we're, we're basically robbing Peter to pay Paul, I mean, yeah.
No, because the 14 mils is for debt service, is that right?
Debt service?
Well, we're not, I mean, we're, we've got all these dollars sitting in this account that hasn't been used and it's been asked about, not just the last few months, but it's been asked about a couple of years. Why is this balance so high? Well, it's being used, we're, we're saving it for projects. Well, now we got a project. I mean, I, I, I got that, that our, the accounting, that's, that's why I'm not an accountant. I don't, but I, I have to believe that we could, that there's a way to do this. Even if you encumber those dollars in that account, they don't go out until we know the actual cost. But, but we ought to know, we ought to know, have a good feel for them very soon. And then we can, you know, I, I don't know how you do it. If, if you pay the expense and then the, and the expense dollars for the construction project pay the debt service.
That's not allowed under, under the, the revenue debt statutes, unless it's specifically laid out in the ordinance. And there is a portion in there, but not beyond the, the September payment.
Can we confirm that this amount with this, how much is it, 1.?
Just shy of 1.2.
Just shy of 1.2 million.
We, we just, we can't confirm at this point that there's 1.2 in stormwater funds that are going to go in that direction? Is that what you're saying?
To the project?
Right.
Not definitively.
I, I, I can't confirm that it's not 1.2, I can't confirm that it's not 1.4. You know, you know, when we go and we do these project estimates, that's exactly what they are, is the estimates. And as we, as the bids come in and each one of those general conditions are outlined through this, we'll know then through, from an, an engineering standpoint, what that will be. But stormwater's a restricted fund. Therefore, the funds that are used out of that could go to stormwater. But to the point we're trying to make here is that the debt service is the debt service. We know what we are going to need annually to pay that back. And if we reduce the millage this year and, and take it from stormwater, then arguably, that millage would need to go up even more the following year. And we still have taken a big hit out of our stormwater reserves. And, and that's the concern I've got is, one, our ability to pay for this out of stormwater, which I would probably argue might be questionable, but that would be a legal question we could get answered. But the second part is, to me, we've weakened our stormwater fund and then, and put ourselves in a position to have to find that revenue again, the year two, three, four.
Would it, would it be a nine mil increase this year and a five mil next year? I mean, could it be split like that?
What do you mean, like, do not?
Well, if he's saying that we're, we're borrowing, you know, in two different cycles or what have you, and then we use that stormwater fund to subsidize, that's what we're talking about here, to drive down expenses on the project, that, is it, I mean.
I would argue that we're artificially subsidizing it. I, I, I think that that's, that's probably the best way I would articulate it is that we would artificially subsidize the debt this fiscal year by taking money out of stormwater and putting it towards this debt to drive that millage down that we'll then still have to come up with that, those funds.
But we don't know that. We don't know because when we started this whole discussion, I think it was said publicly that every year, week, the council can adjust that millage down, down, down.
You absolutely can, yes, sir.
Out of the gate, I'm trying to do that.
You absolutely are. And with all due respect, sir, my job is to say to you that I think it's a good idea or bad idea. The fact of the matter is, is that I'm not going to vote today. Y'all are going to vote on this. You asked my opinion. We came forward with 14 mils because we know that that's what the debt service is going to be to cover the debt for the 2024s, full stop. If, and, and if we get impact fees implemented, or we start getting H-tax and A-tax revenues coming in, or we have a fund balance appropriation that y'all want to make, that makes all the sense in the world. I think the stormwater's sacrosanct. I think that is, needs to be kept, kept, set aside for stormwater system-wide improvements, not for projects that the city does. That, to me, is the difference.
Yeah, and, and you've said that to me before privately, and, and I disagree because system-wide, once, when you, when you tap on to the system, you becoming part of the system.
But we would be using stormwaters to increase the stormwater impact that we're creating. We're building projects, we're not improving the system, we're just mitigating the system.
I, I, I got you. But, but it's, I think our, in my mind, the discussion's gotten off what I want to do. We've got dollars that we have control of. We have dollars that we know we can use for certain things. We have this debt service expense that we know that if, to pay it, if we don't do anything with those dollars in stormwater, we got to raise the millage by 14 mils. I found a way that we can cut that millage by five mils. And I, I I, I don't understand the logic behind it. If, 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 I know that that's to, to pay debt service. But if you, if you say, okay, we're going to use stormwater funds to pay debt service on true stormwater expenses. Is, is that? Because you're not going to take that money out of the account. That, it's, it's like you're going to have to write a check out of that account and put it with another check to pay debt service, pretty much. Because that money, yeah, it, that money is encumbered for stormwater expenses, that, overall. Is my thinking wrong?
I think the legal issue you're going to run into is that stormwater is restricted for stormwater projects and expenses.
All right, I don't have.
And just because there is stormwater included in another project, we can get an opinion on this, that does not necessarily translate to a single year's debt service when there's stormwater projects in an amount that's amortized over 30 years. And you want to take all that 30-year amortization and shove it into one year for one year's payment.
Well, you don't have to. You can, you can just, you can reduce, still reduce it. You're, but you're putting those dollars, you're, you're, you're encumbering those dollars in the stormwater account, correct?
If you were to do that, that would stay there. And then that would reduce our payment by one, you know, whatever the percentage of, you know, 1 million over the 40 million and 1/30 of that each year.
But it would still reduce it.
But it's not going to reduce five mils in any single year.
So why are we raising taxes by 14 mils?
Because that's.
That's what it takes to make the annual payment.
That's the debt service annually.
For one year.
Okay, so.
That 14 mils.
Why can't we do it in just one year then? And then the next year, we have the same conversation? Maybe we can go down even more?
And that's where, where, in, in, you know, you're amortizing 30 years of payments into one year, but it's, it's designed to be spread out over 30.
Is there a penalty to pay early?
In, in what we borrowed? We do not have any prepayment, I remember the year, but we can't prepay for.
For 10.
10 years.
Set it aside for 10 years, whatever. I mean, I don't, I don't get this. We got the money or we don't have the money. I don't, I don't understand it. It's, we've been carrying this balance in, in this account for a very long time. And the only thing I know that we've, we've had some emergencies, but we're still leaving over a million dollars that's unencumbered. I mean, I don't, you know, if it's, if it's not legal to do, I understand. And what I really don't understand, it's unintended consequence, I guess. But it would appear to me that we've got the money. So why raise? Why can't we just pull back on that, that 14 mils? I don't.
If we proceeded with the budget as written and the millage increase as presented, as we move forward with the projects, is there anything that would preclude us if staff and we encouraged us to use the stormwater money to pay for those expenses when they are down to the penny? We know what they're going to be as we move forward with the projects. Is there anything that would preclude us from doing that as we move forward?
Through the fiscal year, you set the millage. This would be a, a year two question.
And then we get to year two, we, if we have been able to use, and we have decided to use the stormwater money between now and then, we would then be able to turn around, have the discussion to roll it back at that point.
I would still argue that it's not project-specific, that it needs to improve and/or help maintain the entire system.
Understood.
Well. But, but I thought to, to Mr. Hubbard's point, I thought part of our conversation, it, it, the early retreat that we had, was this idea of payments not starting in full till the 25, till 25, so that we could go into this project with the idea in mind that we would have at that point in time passed some of the things that we had been talking about that would, you know, that would affect the millage going forward, i.e. the, the impact fees and possibly using stormwater money and that sort of thing. So I'm, I'm not sure that, I wasn't clear that we were going to start with what we are talking about now with the idea that in subsequent years, we would adjust it.
But in, I, I, I think it's, it, my mind is that the fog is lifting a little bit. The, the pushback on this from staff is that it doesn't matter if we use dollars we already have. And, and we cut the project, you know, our, our, our need for outside funds, if we cut it in half, doesn't matter. Because in essence, we still have to pay the, the bond back by the, because this is a new, it's, it's not new, it's, it's new for us the way we're doing it this time. in that, in that instance, it doesn't matter if we have these other taxes that go along with it. It doesn't matter if we reduce expenses because we've got impact fees, or we've got this, or we've got that. It's still the same, you know, we, I'm starting to get foggy again, but it, it just seems like that, that, that we will never roll back to 14 mils. Because we, we've got, we know we have dollars that we can, we can attach to it somehow. And originally, I thought, well, we can just use that fund to pay the engineering costs, whatever. But it doesn't matter. Is that, is my thinking, am I starting down the right path, Mr. Mayorman?
Mike, just let me know that the, the stormwater expense on the Public Safety Training Facility is $173,000.
Okay.
Reducing the millage by 1.2 million dollars would assume that there's a million dollars worth of stormwater improvements on the garage.
Okay.
Okay, so it, to me, it just continues to drive home the point that using stormwater funds for this artificially drives down the debt service. And you're pushing off the cost of the stormwater in one year, and you're pushing, you're, you're spreading it out over 30 years. Reducing, using, depleting the fund balance in.
Well, we're not depleting the fund balance, let's don't get that.
Uh, well, I would say that we are because we still have to pay the debt. And the debt is, the debt is what it is. We know what the debt is. It's going to be a 14 mil, and that's what we need to pay, the debt. The stormwater fee is, or the stormwater fund is restricted. And it's for system-wide stormwater projects. These are individual stormwater projects. And I think that's the difference. And even if we were to take 1.2 million dollars out of the fund balance, it's, it's, it far exceeds what the cost for the stormwater is going to be.
So the, the 14 mils is, that, that's just for these two projects? Is that what we're saying?
Oh, yes, sir. That's the debt service on these projects.
On these two, not the four?
Yes, sir, these two.
You're getting around to the question in my mind. So when we get ready to do the other two projects, we've got to raise millage again?
Possibly, maybe not, possibly. But that's been part, that, that is, that has been part of this the entire time. The 14 mils pays for the 2024 Series A and B. We get these things moving, we get them built. The garage is taxable, we start working to generate the revenue that's going to come with all of these projects. And we continue to endeavor to drive down the debt on this. We get the garage built, we get the fire station built, we get the Public Safety Training Facility built, we get the Sports and Events Center built. We get them moving. But the part, the, the discussion has been from the get-go that we have to pay for this stuff upfront. The sooner we get moving on this, the better. But artificially drive down the debt service by using the stormwater funds doesn't help the situation from a debt perspective this year. And it only depletes our fund balance in stormwater. I think it weakens our position in stormwater for any project that may come up. And we identified 12 to 14 million dollars, maybe more, out of that Maple Creek, was it 17 million dollars worth of, of, of projects?
I, I, I got it, but it also, and I'll tell you, if you want to put that study out there, I showed a picture, identified a picture, wasn't even in, in the city where they're showing a flooded home. They were showing an issue with a storm drain inlet that was clogged. It should have never been clogged because we have men and equipment to do that. So I'm skeptical, so I, I guess I haven't understood this whole financing to begin with. Because normally, if, if you, if you go to a bank, and this is so simplified and, and this, this financing is so far above than going to a bank for a, a little small project. But if I go to the bank and say, hey, I want $100,000 worth of credit, I want to, I'm going to build this. And they say, sure. But if I don't take that 100,000, if I, 50,000, I just owe back 50,000. But if I don't take that hundred thousand, if I, fifty thousand, I just owe back fifty thousand. So what that means is the forty million, we've bought, we've bought it. We've bought it. So I want to find out how we can use that stormwater money to pay that down. I think we're smart enough to do that. I don't think that, that. I've said my piece. I don't know anything else to say.
We've got an amendment on the floor. It's been seconded. We've had discussion. I'm going to call for final discussion. Others? Questions?
So I got one question. So what are the available resources to apply towards that forty million millage number? I mean, we've talked about traffic, I mean, impact fees, potentially stormwater, potentially, I guess, general funds. I mean, what, what are the different?
Storm taxes, debt, uh, general fund, fund balance, impact fees if this council decides to pass them, accommodations and hospitality taxes, and then ultimately in the facilities themselves, user fees and/or revenue generated off of the sites. That's, that's, all that's available. I do think that stormwater is arguably available to some small degree, but it is not, in my estimation, one point two million dollars worth of impact that we, and it's taken us, that, that two point three that's in there. How long have we had the, the stormwater fee in place? Twenty years? That fund balance is reflected over twenty years of funds going into that. That's how, that's where we've, we've come. We've accumulated that, those funds.
That's true, but in the last, I, I think I even asked before you came on board, why are we carrying such a high balance? Well, we're, we've, we've got projects we're going to do. We've got projects we're going to do. Not emergency projects we're waiting on, but we've got projects we're going to do. So that argument with me doesn't hold water because the money's been in there and if, if we wanted to do projects, we could have got them on the table.
All right, we've got a motion. Got a second on the motion and it's an amendment to the second and final reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. The amendment is to reserve the equivalent of five mils from the stormwater fund to reduce the millage proposed from fourteen to nine mils. Final call for questions, comments, or discussion.
Can that even be done? I mean, do we even know that that can be done by regulations governing the way the city's finance fees are set up or anything? I mean, because I know there's certain things, you can't take something out of this to use for this. There's certain funds that only certain things can come out of, correct? Yeah. So I'm just.
I would argue that we would have a, we'd have a tough slog with utilizing stormwater fees to that level for these projects when the number's unknown.
But to that point, we've got a hundred million dollars worth of projects. And I understand we're dealing with year one, but we've already, we're paying on thirty years, right? Is that right?
The debt service begins, that's the debt service for the entire length of the, the bond.
Gotcha. But we will incur a million dollars in stormwater fees. I mean, in stormwater related items from engineering to actual construction.
And again, I would say in year two or year three, if we identify that we have improved the system through even the Depot Street Garage, if we've somehow improved the system, then I have no problem coming to you and say, you know what? We did two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of stormwater improvements to the system downtown. Arguably, you can take that amount of money and apply it to it. I think that could, that argument could be made. I don't think it could be made this year.
But isn't the same logic going to be true next year that it is this year?
Could be. And I think we're going to have discussions like this every year about how to best service the debt. In year one, I, I, I do not think taking a million point two out of the stormwater reserves, it puts us in the best financial position. That's, that's my opinion.
And that's what you get paid.
Yes, sir.
So how far out there are the other two parts of these projects?
It just depends right now. The other, the other, the other two, we've got it scheduled for twenty twenty-five. If we need to, we can push it to twenty twenty-six. But there's, there's a lot of things that we need to continue to work on as we go through that. You know, we, we did go out to the taxpayers and say that we intend to deliver four projects, four Greer in four years, and we're on pace to do that. But in that, in that time, we, my intent is to have an impact fee ordinance in place, generate revenue off of that, which I think will, could be substantial to pay the debt service on this. And so I intend to continue to move forward with these projects in a timely manner.
So if it's going to take these two series of bonds to fund forty million in projects.
No, sir, it'll take, those two series of bonds will take, will, will fund the entire hundred, the twenty twenty fours and the twenty twenty fives. The twenty twenty four A and B are just, yes, that's the forty million. Yes, sir.
So we don't, we haven't done any bonds for the remainder of the project.
We have, no, sir, we have not issued that yet.
So if we're doing fourteen mils for this part of the project, we could end up doing another sixteen mils.
If, yeah, if we don't put in impact fees and we don't find those, use those other revenue sources that are going to become available, that is possible. And when we went through this exercise with our financial advisors, all things being equal, no growth in H tax, no growth in A tax, no growth in the mill, nothing. No growth over thirty years? Yeah. It could be twenty-nine mils. But that, that was a, that was a hyper-conservative assumption. And based on our annual growth rate, we know that that's not reasonable. The fourteen mils puts us in place, in a position to pay the entire twenty twenty fours and, uh, A and B for the entire life of the loan. That's it. So that, that's why we're, we're being aggressive on the front end. So we've got the money to start rolling towards these other projects.
If the projections work out, this is priming the pump to generate the other sources of income that we expect and have every reason to be optimistic that will come, that will help fund the next series of bonds.
That's right. That's right.
But I thought that because we're, we're dealing with different pots of money, that we're not, you know, if we generate X amount, no matter how we do it, it's, it's the same logic about reducing millage that we are, we're facing now.
Mr. Arrowhead, I think you're right. I understand what you're saying. I do. Stormwater in this particular case is not the funding source I would use to, uh, take the millage down this year. I, I just, I, 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 that is a specialized fund, it's a restricted fund. And we don't have one point two million dollars worth of stormwater improvements in these, in the twenty twenty fours. There's just not. And so with that, I don't, I, I, I don't think it's wise long-term to diminish the, the fund balance in stormwater to pay down one year's worth of debt when we know we've got what, what the millage is required annually to cover the debt. Because once that, that fund balance is gone, it's gone. And we had to wait a while to build it back up in, in stormwater.
Do we have any projections on what the impact fee will generate per unit at this point?
Per unit? We've got some rough estimates on what it would be on a, um, single family, multifamily. But right now, those are just the, that's what the draft study's kind of given us.
Was it like forty-five hundred dollars, thirty-five hundred? What was the?
Uh, memory serves, I think we, uh, the, those numbers for single family was just north of five thousand per unit, per single family.
Well, it looks like if you look at, if you look at the housing starts report, you know, we were going to have, I don't know, on average of about five hundred units. I mean, if you multiply that by five thousand, that's two point five million, you know, potential revenue that we could get from that.
One time, everybody.
And, but going forward annually, right? I mean, if the trend continues as far as the, if that's how many houses are built and our units are added to the city every year.
We'll get into the, 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 the numbers on the impact fee, but if, and I'm going from memory, so please don't quote me on it. But I think we've got, you know, seventeen thousand, an inventory of seventeen thousand lots or something along those lines. And, and over, um, over seven years, um, there's a, I think, an eighteen million dollar, you know, generation of, of impact fees. But that's all stuff we need to talk about when we get into the impact fee side of it. It is going to be revenue that can be used. And, and I believe it's going to be substantial. But in this particular case today, the question is, should we use one point two million dollars out of our stormwater reserves? Obviously, there's a motion on the floor to consider that. Staff's recommendation that is that we do not do that, but that's where I'm stopping. That's my recommendation.
I very much appreciate what you're trying to do and your, your only thing I genuinely do. I think what I hear staff saying is the potential negative of doing that outweighs the benefit of depleting that fund by that much. Is that a fair?
Well, I, I think the, the depletion is one factor of it, but just the legality of using those funds for that, I think, is part of the other issue.
And still, a year from now, we may find ourselves behind the eight ball and with a significantly depleted fund if we have used that within the guidelines that we're allowed to legally.
Council, second and final reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. This ordinance comes before us with a amendment which says that, um, the amendment asks that, um, we reserve the equivalent of five mils from the stormwater fund to reduce millage from fourteen to nine mils. A vote of yes will be for four in favor of the amendment. A vote of no will be against the amendment. With that, we'll, we shall vote. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowhead?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
No.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented and voted on at first reading.
Comes as a motion, though here, a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
We about beat this horse to death, but I do have one question. Under economic development, and luckily, we have Mr. Deaton here. There is a line item that says entrepreneurship, three hundred six thousand, seven hundred dollars. I'd just like an explanation of what that is. Three hundred six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
That's his new salary.
Yeah.
What? Wait a minute. Pump the brakes.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Reno Deaton, Economic Development Director for the City of Greer. It's been a week since I've had a chance to, to visit you here at the podium. Thanks for having me back. Mr. Press, with respect to the line item for economic development referencing entrepreneurship, that refers to our Platform of Greer program, including expenses for our consultant relationship with Bluewing Strategies.
With what now?
Bluewing Strategies. That's the company consultant group that's helped us to create the Platform of Greer program. They help us to staff the bootcamp program and then also to sort of create our pipeline for entrepreneurs to go through the bootcamp. In the, in the last year, also taken on responsibility for a coaching program. So we've identified eight high-impact, high-potential entrepreneurs who are graduates of the bootcamp. We take them now through a twelve-month program to help them to accelerate their business.
So that's what we're paying to retain them?
Uh, in addition to expenses for the Platform of Greer program. Yes, sir.
I assume that the, the Spartanburg one and the other consulting firm is in there somewhere.
They are in special contracts, I believe.
Mr. Deaton, I, I, I think it might be valuable for our, our council at this point. I know I've, I've had a, you know, a council member ask about some different things that we're doing and, you know, and how, how all that takes place. Obviously, the industrial side of, of, of what you have done for us for many, many, many years is, is, is changing and that, that came about with a, a change in your organization to, to some degree and your focus, obviously. I think it might be valuable for you to, to give us some insight into how y'all have effectively sort of pivoted in over the last several years and where you see the organization going.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I, I guess I'd call it more an evolution than a pivot. If we go back to when we were the Gruet Development Corporation back in two thousand nineteen, we engaged in this strategic planning exercise with consultants' help to figure out how we, sort of, as an economic development program, remain competitive and continue to sort of push the envelope, if you will, in terms of the kind of projects and the wages that we could attract relative to those projects that would be new to the City of Greer. Part of our challenge was sort of competing on a higher level, diversifying the economy in any way that we can and competing against some communities that traditionally we, we may have struggled with. The, the, the route, I think, that we identified through that strategic plan was looking at innovation and entrepreneurship and how we create this sort of culture and perception, a reputation, if you will, that Greer is a community that's friendly to that type of industry and, and more importantly, the right location for those types of organizations. From that process evolved a Platform of Greer, which is our effort to create that culture of entrepreneurship and innovation here in the City of Greer, to really put Greer on the map as being a community that is innovation-friendly, innovation-driven, and entrepreneur-friendly. It's a long play with respect to how we attract those higher-order manufacturers, those higher-order businesses, R and D, knowledge economy, knowledge-based economy kinds of jobs, those kinds of jobs and industries that pay a higher wage and create a higher standard of living for those folks who live and work here in Greer. And so I think what we're doing is evolving what we do for economic development. We will always be in the business of recruiting great businesses in the industry. We'll always be in the business of retaining our industry and businesses that are already here in Greer. But I think programs like the, the Platform of Greer, our efforts relative to innovation, help us to drive, sort of, push the needle in terms of the kinds of businesses that we can recruit here to Greer. There could be a day, uh, not too far away, where we'll begin to see office development located here in the City of Greer, where we'll see higher-order research and development proj, projects, much like Proterra, land here in the City of Greer. But to do that, we've got to build a foundation of reputation based on marketing, based on proving who we are and what we can do. It's a long play. We'll continue to do the things that we're doing in the interim, but in the long term, I believe we'll win.
Thank you, sir. Any follow-up to that or?
Nope. I was curious about that big number.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Comments?
Well, just in follow-up to that, I mean, I don't have a question for Reno, but just a comment. And I, I've said this at one of the last meetings, but I appreciate that we're doing the long play and investing in entrepreneurs and bringing businesses in. But I think eventually, we're going to have to get a return on that investment and get some of them to start putting down roots here and setting up business and shop in Greer and so that they do create jobs and, and there is some type of investment on their part. And it's not just a giveaway as far as resources and services from the city. And I don't know where that line is in the future, where we need to set that boundary, but I think we do need to continue to have that conversation and be mindful because that is a pretty substantial investment. I hope it's a good one.
Others?
The only thing I might go ahead, if we're getting ready to vote on this, is to go ahead and thank all the departments for their hard work on getting the budget together. Also, when looking at the figures that came in, in May, that I think almost all of, well, all of them except maybe one came under budget, which I'd like to make a very good congratulations to the departments that did that hard work to keep it under. So I think that's great. I appreciate all your work.
A question on the millage increase. Do we have a, like a history of our track record as far as millage increases are concerned? I mean, how, how have those looked over the last several years?
Like a long straight line.
There's not much to it.
And it's got one little blip in it.
That would be great. Thank you.
As long as you've been lively.
It had a blip in the, about two thousand.
Eight or nine.
Four, maybe?
Oh, maybe four.
And then it had another blip when Andy came. The only two.
I'm thinking it was two thousand nine was the biggest one. Oh, nine and then in twenty twenty-one, I think we did two mils. Roads. It's going to be for roads.
But you remember early on, when we did a small one, Joe made us promise we would take it back the next year, which we did.
You know, Wally's, Wally's looking it up and I, I, I don't have any information at my fingertips, but I think it's, I think it's relevant for us to be aware of the fact that.
but I think it's relevant for us to be aware of the fact that while we have been prudent and while, you know, you're not going to see a lot of ups and downs in our millage over the course of even 30 years, that it's not without precedent that we could have. And in South Carolina, as you know, you know, CPI plus growth is available to us in terms of millage increases and can be done quite effortlessly in terms of what that looks like. And so while we haven't had need to raise millage over the years, we've been fortunate in that situation. And when you take a look back, had we not been in the situation that we have been in, we could have been raising taxes on a regular basis with just current CPI and growth through the years, it could be a lot higher than what we are talking about right now. So just something to keep in mind. Well, it's no secret that I'm not a fan of the millage. And what upsets me is Spartanburg is already charging, it's not one cent, it's 1%. Greenville is going, wants to charge not one cent, 1%. It's being misportrayed by the news media as one cent. It needs to be called 1%, which is what it is. The school district always takes a big extra cut every year, and the state is holding $1.8 billion of our dollars that they should be giving back, and the county is still holding $30 million that they should be giving back. And I just, it's got to end somehow. It's got to end somewhere.
Andy, you got a question? So the consultants we'll be using, where we potentially could get allotments from the state, how does that play into, let's say, we got 25 million? We're going to get 25 million, let's put it that way. We're going to get 25 million from the state on some of these projects. How does that play into the bond?
Oh, I think that would be a fantastic source of revenue to be utilized for these projects. And that would be the first recommendation that I would make, is that that 25 million would go to debt service on these particular projects. And I think that is something we could absolutely do.
So that would subsidize the millage at that point?
It could, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What would subsidize it? Like a payment from the state, if they gave us money?
Appropriation for public services or for, you know, any of the...
Public safety or something along those lines.
Public safety, yeah. Public safety particularly, that's, you know, what we see a lot of our neighbors acquiring.
Floor's yours, sir.
Thank you. Do you see this graph on your desk in front of you or just here on the screen?
It's on the desk.
Okay. So this graph on the right-hand side, the City of Greer millage rate, this is just a 20-year snapshot. So you can see it's been flat relatively since 2011. We did have that, about a four-mill increase in 2010 to 2011 that was coming out of the recession, and then it was flat back to 2004 prior to that. But this is just a 20-year snapshot that I have here in the graph. Over here in the data, column F that I've just highlighted goes back to 1988. So the graph went back to 2004, so we're at 93.9. 2001 was 97.9. The year before that, in 2000, it was 81.9. And it bounced around, you know, '81, '87, '98, back in 1989, and then I was not involved with the city in 1988, 1989, so I don't know what was, you know, causing the 49 to 98 mills, but this is the history back to 1988.
But what was it in '99 and 2000? And it jumped when?
In 2001.
Went from 81.9 to 97.9 between 2000 and 2001. It went back down, right?
That was the, I don't remember who it was mentioning just a second ago, but that was the four mills from Mr. Baldwin.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
So, okay, 16-mill increase, and then they went back down four mills, correct?
Yes. And that year was, we were changing our fiscal year, and that was the year that we were on paper negative fund balance. We had to reverse that trend.
Is that when the budget cycles went mid-year?
It was a nine-month year that year. And we had to replenish the negative fund balance and then chart the course from there.
I was really just asking this question to kind of prove a point. I just, we haven't had a lot of millage increases through the years, and so I can understand, you know, where Jay's coming from, trying to reduce the millage increase, you know, even by five mills, because this is, it's really unprecedented if you look at that chart over the last 30 years, and I see there's that, you know, when did you say that was? '88, '89?
The first one, yeah, the first one was '88, '89, and it went up, what?
That almost sounds like some governmental change that they instituted that caused that.
It was almost 50 mills there, 49.
Something unusual happened there. I'm not even going to, you know...
Can't speculate.
Right. I discount that, but I'm thinking about, what year do you have it on now?
That's '99 and 2000.
Right, '99 and 2000. So I guess that's, and I understand where he's coming from. I mean, it's a significant ask to talk about, you know, raising the millage 14, and then, you know, we're talking about the other two projects tonight and then having, you know, the potential for something like that to jump up next year. I just, I think that's a pretty hefty ask of counsel to, you know, to go back-to-back the two 14-mill increases or anything even remotely close to that. And I just, I think that would be, I would hope that staff between now and next year can find some other options versus continuing this climb with millage increase every single year, especially with significant amounts like this.
Sir? This is the discussion we should have had six months ago. This was part of the discussion we started six months ago. I don't have a recollection of all of these facts from six months ago. Well, when we met with the consultant in Andy, which was around the time we had discussion about this at a golf course, we saw projections that factored in everything that we've talked about tonight, including the fact that we saw several projections that showed reaching the 14-mill mark and how that, over time, could be stabilized through the life of the bonds based on growth and management. So that's not entirely new to us.
You talking about the PowerPoint on the third floor that we had?
Yeah.
I think I pretty well registered my disappointment and dislike for it that night.
Second and final reading of ordinance number 25-24. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2425, an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore, levying taxes, and to provide for an effective date. This final call for comment? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
No. And there again, mine's based on the large amount of the loan and the increase. Thank you.
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items of new business. We have two items before us this evening, the first of which is the reading of ordinance number 26-2024. This is the ordinance authorizing the closure of an alley in the City of Greer. Mr. Merriman?
Yes, sir. This is in response to the public hearing. There is no necessary change of information. You can see in your packet, the intent to close the alley allowed that lot on Bearden Street to be developed. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. In regards to potential ownership of the alley in the future, is the representative or owner of the property with us this evening? Are you available for questions if any arise? With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
I'm glad he got to see how sausage is made.
Mr. Smith has got to see lots of sausage made lately. He is serving as our representative on the Tax Committee at the county level and is actively involved in issues across our county. We appreciate your service, sir. Thank you. Any other comments in regards to the closure of the alley in ordinance number 26-2024?
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final, second and first reading of ordinance number 27-2024. This is an ordinance to amend the budget for the City of Greer for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024. Mr. Seifert, you got information for us in that regard, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. The amendment that we are requesting tonight is solely in response to GASB pronouncements that have been released previously. It does not require any actual change of expenses, but it does require in how we record those expenses. So one of them in particular is to leases. The GASB changed the way we were required to record operating leases. In the past and in the current year's budget, we recorded the lease payment for copiers. All we would budget would be that year's payment. GASB has come back and said that we are required to record that as a right-to-use asset like an asset purchase. So the full value of our full copier fleet must now be recorded as a purchase, but there's no cash outlay. It is just a recording on the books. And then the second pronouncement is related, and it is specifically for subscription-based assets, so where we have cloud-based software, where we are paying an annual subscription, we're now required to capitalize those and record it as a purchase, and that will be amortized over the life of the lease and depreciated like a regular asset. So again, this has not changed any cash outlay, but simply changes the way we must record it in our books.
Does that show up as a good or a bad thing on our bottom line?
Neither.
Good.
But if we don't do it, it'll show up bad in the audit.
With that, then, I'll introduce first reading of ordinance number 27-2024. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any further discussion in regards to ordinance to amend the budget, City of Greer fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.